This time I'll call the August 5th, 2021 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of additions to our agenda today. First one is a resolution, and this is authorizing a Dixon County tax sale. The second one is for a letter of support on behalf of Twin Valley Telco. And so I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. The next item is that of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the July 29th meeting, also payroll of $315,762.61, wire payments for utilities of $8,946.13.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have the motion, and I will give the second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Commission comments, Ron?
I don't have anything.
Okay Craig?
Ended last Thursday, you were submitting a commission that no bail. The county patrol, the planning commission handles all but 103 counties, I believe, for the state of Kansas, their money, 45 million, I believe, so.
Homeland security.
Yeah, for homeland security, yeah. There is money available to hospitals and nonprofits that I don't think that the lady that was there says that we're not taking advantage of because they don't like to turn money back. So maybe Chanel might have a little more, give her more duties. That's all I have.
Okay, yesterday I had someone ask me if the parade was yesterday, that day. And I advised them that I was sure it wasn't because if it were parade day, you would see chairs and blankets piled about seven o'clock in the morning.
It would be hot.
But it was today, and yeah, and it happened. So it looks like a nice, cool day to start out, or recently nice weather to start for the raid and the fair. And other than that, I really don't have anything else. This morning, we did take a tour, some of the building, commission people, as well as the commissioners, and Brad led that, and Barb was there, just to kind of see how the jail's coming along. And we're kind of in the home stretch. I mean, everything's kind of the final touches and getting cleaned and lots of details, a lot of work to do yet. But everyone, the workers there seem very, very busy and on the move, and so that's a good thing. And then also Barb Jones gave us a report earlier this morning. And so that's all I have.
Just got an email here, it comes from Senator McDonald, the August 9th, there will be face mask required or face covering, this district board, that's the, that's August 9th.
August 9th, and that's for Dixon County?
Yeah, for Bay City Judicial District. Well, it's all.
For all of the 8th Judicial District?
Across the state.
Or across the state, okay. So there'll be a mask requirement?
Well, let's see.
If it is going into the judiciary.
We're hanging signs, making changes on our website. Be a newspaper deal tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. This is kind of impromptu, but John, I guess you've been visiting with the school superintendents and districts. And I mean, do you want to add anything to that or any information?
We did have a meeting a week ago with, invited all the students to participate. Couple in attendance and the rest were all zoomed in. I'm kind of always looking at, get some, starting school safely. As we know, the COVID increases increased over the last month, right after the 4th of July, and continues to do so here in Dickinson County. We've seen it an increase, but it's pretty well plateaued. We see, you know, we look at a couple of days, we're above 10. I think 13's been our max that we've ever had since the uptick. But it's now hanging down below double digits, so that's good. So some days we're eight, some days we're six. And we did look the other day, and 40% of the cases that we've had so far were since the uptick has been ones that we could relate back to a family, a group of families. So when we say that, we'd say that, you know, four or five that was positive that relate back to the same address. So we've had, it is, you know, it does spread quicker because it is able to do so. It's a family, it tends to spread throughout a family a little. With that being said, it gets a little more concerning when you talk about going back to school and kids sitting closer in a classroom and that sort of thing. So, but we did come out with some recommendations for the school and kind of recommendations we gave were something that they could build upon. Now that the masking part is kind of the school's responsibility now to decide what they want to do with that. But we gave them some ideas on quarantine and the rest of it, to give them some options of what they need to do. And kind of did a level approach where, you know, if the amount of activity in a school would stay down, then they could be more open than if it picked up and some steps that they may consider as far as doing some things different if it does reach a larger number of students. So Abilene, I think, did come up with a plan that they took some of the suggestions we gave them, and they're, we're starting first. They start next week on the 12th. And I don't know that probably other schools have totally 100% decided yet on what they're doing for sure. But I know Chapman, I think, board meets on Monday night. I've been asked to come to it, so we'll talk to them and see what they're thinking and some of the others. So that's kind of where we're at with it. And then a week after that, a week after next, we'll meet with the school nurses at all the schools and talk to them about, you know, if we've decided and how we can help them and they help us. Abilene is going to do some testing or setting up to do some testing of students. They picked up some supplies that we had yesterday afternoon and to get them started. So that's what we've had with the schools and we'll help them throughout the school year and touch base with them on a regular basis and offer to go out and do vaccinations. Schools, if they, if they so desire, will go out and do whatever is needed. So, you know, we're hoping for a little better start with a little less uptick of COVID than has happened this year, but it's not the case, so.
Question, the testing that they're going to do, is that the rapid testing?
It would be rapid, it's a 15-minute test.
Okay, people have to react back in 15 minutes?
Yeah, and it's a, and it's, of course, it's going to come with parental consent. They'll have parental consent to do it, but really what it's going to do is it's not intended for, for the time it would be used as if someone, another child was a close contact to a positive case. Then if I was, I was positive and I had three other students sit next to me and less than three feet, they would, I bet, be identified as close contact if they chose to do that. The guidance that they have is they could then have those three students stay in school. They'd have to wear a mask for seven days, and they'd have to be tested every day before school. And if it was negative, they could continue to be in school. So it's an option. That's an option that the school can decide to do. So, and our goal is much like theirs, to keep kids in school. I think at the state level, it's become a little harder, as I understand, for them to put kids on remote because I think the state has taken the thing that they want to keep kids in school and not make it real easy for schools to just go out and send them, send them all that way. So that's the goal for them. The goal for us is to do what we can to provide a safe environment to keep the kids in the classroom if we can, so.
Okay. Just one other thing, if people are trying to gather information or data on the county, is there any suggestion on that or?
Well.
I don't know that there's uniformity across the state. I don't know that that's even possible or achievable, but.
There's not, and the difficulty with it, and we're talking about going back to the dashboard, especially if we see a bigger uptick than we are with cases. But some of the issues with the, with where we get our information and from KDHE, but you go on KDHE's website, and they got gobs of information on their website, and they, they got a lot of the same stuff we would have, you can look it up by county, state, whatever. So for us to do it, it's kind of a duplication of what people could get off of KDHE's website. And it's less man time for us to spend, probably the same numbers, putting it on our, on our. So, but John Hopkins has keeps a daily thing on cases. It's more of a, they've got some state stuff, but it's mostly national stuff. KDHE, CDC does a daily thing as well. You can track vaccinations, they track. The difficulty with it is they're all different in what time they update their information. So whether it be us or whether it be them, and a lot of flack we got before, and you guys probably seen it as well, is people would question the validity of our numbers versus KDHE versus somebody else. And it all depended upon when each one of us got our information. KDHE continually gets cases that they will throw to Gary County because this, because a person has a union address, Union Road address, Johnson City, which they throw that case to Junction City, and Junction City in two or three days will realize, oh, that's a Dickinson County address. So then that person has to get around the back. So they show in Gary County for three days, and then they, they take them off, and then they show them to us, and now we got a new one. So, so there's always problems like that, addressing and then going to the wrong county and then coming back to Hart County. So that's the, that's the big thing is, is, we don't have a problem doing it. We can easily do it. A lot of the information is difficult to get and time consuming. We've hit the state up to say, hey, could you give us easily found information on whether the person was vaccinated or not? And they, we have gave them that a month ago, and we still don't have that easily done. But they, they've not created a report so we can pull that information out. So things like that that we can do, but it takes a lot of digging when it takes like to go through and get it. But yeah, we've talked about certainly doing it, and I know some of the other counties have started back with their dashboard, and we've talked about it, but our numbers have stayed down, you know, below that 10-day level, and we've just not done that yet. Really not seeing a big spike. They're higher than they were, but we're not seeing a huge continuous elevation in the number, so. But we can totally watch that, and if it starts going up, we will, we will put those numbers back. And, but they are available on KDHE's website, they're available on John Hopkins, they're available on CDC. And again, they may vary based upon when they, each one of those entities update their numbers, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? And I'm sure I have, and other commissioners will occasionally hear some comments from people to, you know, get more information out, and the others, thank you for being communicative on what you're doing, and, you know, let's keep it low-key, and others, so, you know, it's, it's kind of all over the place. And Will, I appreciate you monitoring things.
It is, and if they ever want to call and have questions, they certainly call us. I know you guys have had questions come across, and I invite those people to call anytime and answer their questions.
So while you go ahead, we do not have any petitions or proclamations. This is the time for public comment. If someone did have a question or a comment they would like to make, you can indicate on the screen, and we would recognize you whenever we have public comment. I said it, be topic oriented and no personal attacks, and that it's less five minutes or less, that you give your address. And of course, people can send us emails or texts or send a letter throughout the week, and we receive those. Okay, we do not have any public comments, so we're going to go ahead and move on. And so the next thing we have is report of county officers. And Brad, we'll start with you.
Okay, a little bit in addition to the, in your packet, you've got a map to start out with. We've talked about the disaster declaration a few times. Chancey received this, and I thought it might be interesting to pass on to you. The, it shows the whole state and the counties that are still under disaster declaration, which are green, the majority of them, and most of them are much like ours until rescinded. So they have left them open. And again, just to repeat that, the reason for that is so that we remain eligible to obtain assistance from the state and federal government as we need it. And I know that Nancy makes requests to Pico on a weekly basis for different things, whether it's medicine or supplies or what have you. So at this point, as long as we have that declaration, we don't have to pay for that, so. In your packet's also a copy of a couple of letters from K-CAM, from David Luke. I just stapled them together, but the first one came out last week. It indicated that there was going to be a, an increase in our premiums for next year. K-CAM hadn't had any type of a substantial increase for well over a decade, and that we can anticipate that. Apparently, there was some response to that because a couple of days ago, David sent out a second letter saying several members have contacted me after the first letter, and he just wanted to explain the reasoning in more detail. So I know that Janelle budgeted for that. We weren't concerned about it. We still get service from K-CAM that's second to none. So I just wanted you to have a copy of that letter, since you're the board members and know that what it was transpiring, so. A reminder tomorrow afternoon, from 2:00 to 4:00, in the lobby at the courthouse, is a retirement reception for Russ Wilkins. And so we would encourage everyone to stop by and wish him good luck in retirement. Year-to-date staffing reports, Diane has provided in your packet. Been a lot of activity in the last month between jail, road and bridge, clerk and the sheriff. And we've had a few promotions within the sheriff's department as well. So he's starting to grow his legs underneath him and make some changes in his favor, so I see that. Janelle also provided the year-to-date budget reports. And once again, the sales tax is still up, not quite as high as it was last month, but it's still remaining higher than previous months, so we're glad to see that. Good reflection on our local economy. And, but I don't see anything concerning the budgets. John went over his meeting with the school districts. I did provide you a copy of his guidance that he provided to the school districts as well, so you can take that and look it in and have an understanding of what's going on and what information that Wiza County had provided to them, should you get any calls or anybody asks. The 17th, I will believe, which is a Tuesday, correct? The KC is having Norm Bowers' retirement reception in Topeka. That can be done virtually from 1:00 to 3:00, or in person from 3:00 to 5:00. I know that Martin and I are going to meet John Goff there. If you're interested in going, certainly welcome to go with us. As for those that don't know Norm, or maybe new to the game, Norm was the engineer for KC that helped out counties.
Road guy.
Road guy for 10-plus years. We had him numerous times come in and do training, very entertaining as a trainer. And we really miss him, but all the times alone that he came in and helped us out, I felt like we at least owed it to him to show up in person and give him some static. So we look forward, we're looking forward to going down. And they had delayed his retirement reception because of COVID, so it'll be nice to see him and wish him luck, so. So if you're interested in going, just let me know. And then also, as far as invitations, Clay County got out the regional commission meeting, which is scheduled for September 7th, and placed there that evening. So it's getting closer to that particular time. We can make plans to go up there. I assume all three of you probably will want to go to that. And so RSVP, all of us to go, and like Kayla, know that we'll be attending, so.
And enter it in.
Monday's construction meeting was a little bit abbreviated this, this week, but because we did do the punch list on the jail, I spent actually all day going through the jail, doing the punch list, coming up with a pretty good list, most of which has been taken care of or in the process, as you saw. I won't go into a lot of detail, but a lot of the final things are being taken care of on phase one so that we can get in and get the jail opened up next week. As you saw, I served, was contracted by the Wood Builders to go in and spend this week doing a deep cleaning. And they have done that, and they were getting ready to do the scrubbing of the floors and stuff today and finish up tomorrow in preparation for the open house. So the front awning is being installed and should be done later today or tomorrow. But everything's going pretty well. Training took place Tuesday, Wednesday, and today with all the control systems, but with the jail staff. So they should be ready next week when they come in to take off and run. So as far as phase two, many of the windows are installed in the courthouse now. Sheet rock is, I think, as reported, is all done, and they started painting on the second floor. Plumbers are all out of the walls and installing all the overhead stuff, as well as the electricians, the same. And then they did get, earlier this week, get the temporary doors and walls put up to satisfy the fire marshal so they could continue working. With the inmates coming out of the old jail next Tuesday or Wednesday, demolition people are scheduled to be in immediately after that, start the demolition of the old jail. So we're not going to let any grass go underneath them, things are going to continue progressing, so. I got a call from Solomon about potential of doing a county-wide, city-wide cleanup this year. We did not do one last year, so I've got Derek working with the city of Abilene, and Solomon is scheduled a free trash week like we do every other year, so. Probably in September, maybe as early as early October, depending on what schedules look like. But we'll try and get that, get that going. The last thing that relates to road and bridge, in your packet, I, Martin had provided a copy of the three big bridges we've got scheduled, and their dates, the 1510 Ring Road replacement. That's one that kind of surfaced, and we didn't know about it. And it gives the dates of when that will be done. I think it's start date being December this year to get that one replaced. And then our shared bridge up on First Road with Clay County, 1145 First Road, is scheduled to be done here later this year and be done by the, this time next year. And that was a 50-50 split with KDOT, and then we split the remaining 50% with Clay County based on our valuation, and I'm going to guess that's going to be around, it'd be 65-35, something like that, be my guess. And then we've got the last one, which is coming from the Off System Bridge project, projects at 510-800 Avenue. And it stands will be bid middle of next year, so. The last thing is road and bridge is finishing up this week on the paving on Fair Road. Martin thought at the latest they'd be done with that Monday or Tuesday. Then they are going to go to Hope and, or Solomon and overlay North Poplar Street for them. It's in pretty bad shape. While they got the equipment out, then they'll put the paving equipment away, and they're going to Hope to chip seal a bunch of streets for Hope, so. I want to talk to Martin about our parking lot there. We've talked about that, us in the courthouse and possibly overlaying that while they've got the equipment out. But then they will be back to Boeing and going back and doing driveways and all the entryways and intersections and all the other stuff, and it takes time to get finished up, so. Questions?
Yes, I've had a couple of people, Ring Road, there's a couple of spots up there that are rough, really rough. I drove it a couple of times. I don't know if there's any way Martin can fix that, or?
They'll go back with a milling machine on the front of the Bobcat and smooth those spots out. At the same time, they do the intersections and driveways.
Like I said, I didn't go further than county line, but I drove up to 18 that's up and stuff, and then, okay.
Yeah, I think he did tell me that they've got a few places to get back and smooth out, so.
Yeah, but anything good to say except it was the spots, I can imagine that.
No good deed, right? All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Doug?
That's several things. The first one is on the, giving you a resolution on the tax sale for this year. And we have worked this up three times now, three times. And so our list is at 40 parcels of real estate. There's good news about it since this has been, 16 of those parcels have been brought themselves current, so they won't be at risk. 14 of those were from Harrington, and that's tremendous. Glad to have that happen. And unless something changes with, from the federal government, I heard yesterday they were considering the idea of moratorium on some of the foreclosures or foreclosure period. And some of our foreclosures would be SBA loans and governmental entities, and that would affect us, which we'll see if that one develops. So we're going to keep moving forward to a tax sale. The second thing is, I got notice from Judge Keith Collette that he's going to be implementing a change in the, what he assesses for attorney's fees for our court-appointed contract attorneys. You recall that we have, changes were made in their salary arrangement. And so he's going to be making the figure $250 for costs assessed on cases that are juvenile, correction, that are misdemeanor cases that would include our contract attorneys in that one.
Is that one the defendant would pay for in the defense?
Yes.
That's what we were, Craig, was, we were talking about.
Yeah. And of course, if the person's not guilty, the person would owe nothing.
Oh, really?
But, and these would be on misdemeanor cases. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Doug, did the 8th Judicial District group meet to submit names to the governor for consideration? That's still?
That comes up a little bit later.
Okay.
If I can look it up on the calendar.
But it'd be interesting to, once you do submit the names, to, you know, know what names have been forwarded to the governor, and of course, I'm sure the press would pick up on that. It'd be in the paper anyway, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Under notices and communications, we just had a few things here. They're having a dedication of the cell barn this evening, and they had invited the commissioners to attend. And it does not appear that any of us can confirm that we'll be there. There's just so much going on with the fair, and, you know, I for myself, I mean, I'm going to be out at the fairgrounds but juggling two or three things at the same time with family and other. So if it works that I can stop by, I certainly would, but really can't confirm that I'd be there. And I have received a few comments, and we've already covered this in regards to information as far as on COVID and some other things and testing. And I think John answered that pretty much earlier. But it is something that, I mean, it's being monitored, and we're, you know, very aware of what's going on and kind of have the experience of last year, how things were handled. And so we'll, I'm sure that'll be taken into account on what we can do. I did not have anything else. Are there any other letters or comments that anyone else received as far as notices and communications? Did have our county news that came through for the publication. So that's all I have. So that's all I have on that. We'll go ahead and move on to consider resolutions. We did have one resolution that was added and I covered that a little bit. The bet is on a tax sale and it's a resolution authorizing the judicial foreclosure and sale of real estate and interest in real estate property located in Dickinson County, Kansas, whereupon the taxes and specialist assessments levied against each tract of real estate remain due and unpaid. And so that's something we need to do by resolution. And once this resolution is adopted, would this person, Doug, still have opportunity to go in and try to pay it off very quickly?
Absolutely. They would have until four o'clock the day before the tax sale.
Okay. But, but this, you know, does kind of bring it, you know, to attention that it's, it's kind of now or never, you might say. Need to act on it.
If they own the estate and they haven't paid the taxes for a period of time, it would be at risk being lost.
Okay. And I think the goal, you know, basically is just to, to get property back on the tax rolls. And so, okay, if the resolution number is 080521, is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adopt resolution 080521. And this authorizes foreclosure and sale of real estate property is listed in this, this resolution. Are there any questions or comments that anyone would have at this time?
How many repeat customers do we have or sellers? You know, Doug?
Well, there, there are parcels from real estate that we've gone year to year.
We had last year on a sale. I mean, some of them haven't sold for two or three years.
They, uh.
They've all sold?
They've all sold, they have sold for a dollar or.
Okay, they have, okay.
There've been three or four over the years that there was no bids on because there was assessments on it. And so people may be waiting for those ten-year assessments passed and then they would bid. So we have three or four of those that have come up.
Okay.
And one other thing, Lynn, I show that the judge selection is on a Wednesday, August the 18th at nine o'clock in Junction City.
Okay.
Eighteen is what I show. Hopefully not in the committee.
I'm sure, I'm sure they'll send you a reminder. You, you get a packet and such in advance, don't you?
Several hundred pages probably.
Yeah, so, so all of the applicants fill out some information and provide resumes and then give a presentation and are subject to interview or questions from the panel. And, and Doug is the attorney member. And the non-lawyer member for Dixon County is.
Kevin Harris.
Kevin Harris.
Yes.
Okay, so each county of the Eighth Judicial District has a lawyer and non-lawyer representative that goes, helps with that process. Okay. Kind of got sidetracked here, but we, we did have that, we did not vote on the resolution, I don't believe. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And John, if you would pass that to Ron, let Ron pass it to Barb. We have that ready for you. Okay, the next item we have, and John, I appreciate your patience, we're almost to you.
Sure.
Is there was a request from Twin Valley Communications that we give them a letter of support that they can use for trying to reach out for some grant opportunities and funding and so on. And so it's just kind of a formality that, that we would do that. And they have, they are established and they have done work in our county. So are there, is there a motion of support for Twin Valley Communications?
I'll make that motion as support.
And do we have a second? I will give the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Goes, motion carries. I'll let you sign that and then let Ron get that too. Okay, the, as you recall, at our last meeting, we did receive bids that were sealed for a new ambulance and they were opened at the meeting and read. And then of course, the next step was for John to go ahead and look at those closely to make sure they're, everything was taken care of or if there were any questions or issues. And so John will kind of turn this over to you as far as the bids for the new ambulance.
Okay, as you mentioned, we did receive two bids from two companies last week for purchase of a new ambulance. One was received from Emergency Services Supply out of Jefferson City, Missouri that sells Osage ambulances. And the other was from American Response Vehicles out of Columbia, Missouri. And their brand they sell is AEB and that's the two types of ambulances that bid on this project. A little bit of history and looking at both, they're both very reputable companies. We have a couple of ambulances from Osage that we bought in the past and they've been good to work with and, and, you know, but our specifications in the past and have nothing to say bad about the company. They're very, you know, when we've had any warranty work or anything like that, they've worked well with Andy Ann, now Billy, with getting parts and supplies and worked well with them. With those being our last couple we bought, we kind of, when we sent out the specs, we kind of worked off the specs that we had developed for those. And so when they presented a bid off of our specs, their bids more closely represented because that's the way they build their trucks. We talked about building the box on the back, more closely resembled what Osage could provide. So, so that being said, they had less exceptions to our specifications based upon that. So in interviewing those, obviously they met the specifications that we had and supplied the bid and their bid was for $286,790, which includes the chassis of the truck. Now, when we did write the specifications, we did give some allowance this year, which we typically don't. But we gave some allowance for model years 20 or newer simply because of issues with getting trucks that were seen across the country. And so we gave them some allowance so if they had a holdover older truck that, that was older, but still new, that we didn't wrap around that it had to be a 22 model truck. It could be a 20 or newer truck. So Osage, with that being said, the Osage bid was for a 20 model year, a 2020 chassis. It is brand new chassis. It's just one that they have gotten that was sitting around. And when I talked to the people this year, a lot of the ambulance companies have scrounged the earth looking for chassis because they just, you just can't find them. So, but, so their bid is for a 2020 chassis. But other than that, it met the specs as far as the type of vehicle and, and size of vehicle. So the other bid was for American Response Vehicles. We have not purchased any from them in the past. They do have, they do build a reputable truck. I've talked to several of the services that have AEB trucks or through American Response Vehicles. They have no complaints with the company. And they build a good truck equally, probably as good as, as Osage does. The exceptions that they had on the, on their specifications was, or our specifications rather, was how they build their trucks a little different. They use a little different types of material building in the back, their framing is a little different. So that really was the exceptions that they had. They can put the same lights, they can put the same sirens, things like that they can do and they met those specifications. So really the exceptions that they had over the Osage was simply the way they build their box is a little different structure. So that was the exceptions with them. So, and their bid was 302-642 and it was for a 2022 chassis. So it was for a newer chassis on their bid. So with that being said, both reputable companies, I think they both build a good ambulance. We've had no real problems with Osage with the two we got. And, and in speaking to others that, that are other services that use the AEB truck through American Response Vehicles and their services is, is, is good, had no complaints with that either. So both are good companies and glad to get bids from both companies. However, at this time, I, I would recommend just due to the fact that we do have some history with them and, you know, it's worked out well. And I would recommend that we accept the bid for Osage for $286,790 for those reasons. So. That's fine recommendation.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? And delivery time and such is comparable?
Yeah, the delivery time was set out the first quarter of next year and they both could make that one, so.
Okay, so we do have emergency out of Osage or Osage brand out of Jeff City. That was $286,790. So it also happens to be the low bid other than probably one of the distinguishing differences. They have a 2020 chassis. And the other one out of Columbia, Missouri had a 2022 chassis, but, and they're both new.
They're both new and virtually you saw them side by side and you couldn't tell a difference. So they're both built the same. It's, it's just two model years newer. Most of the time, you know, you're looking at 15 to 1800 per year just to get a newer model. So that would probably make up some of the additional cost that.
What should be the anticipated longevity of this once we go ahead and?
Well, we're hoping, I mean, in the past, we've, we've done mileage on it. You know, the, the medium duty trucks that we bought, the Freightliners and, and we had a couple of Chevrolet duties and one International. We were pushing those to about 180 to get out of those. Now we switched back to the little lighter frame and, you know, we'll get a much better run and much better handling. But we may not get the longevity out of those trucks. But I'm still, I'll be able to get 150,000 miles out of it. We used to say that we could run those about 10 years to get that. Now our business has picked up, we're not getting 10 years. So it's really wrapped around the mileage and seeing what, you know, that, that works, truck out more than age. So, you know, we're probably looking at eight years, maybe seven, eight years out of a truck now. These smaller chassis.
Do we have a motion to proceed on this?
I'm in.
Since I'd mentioned the, the low bid and the recommendation, your motion for the recommendation we have.
I'm in.
Okay.
Agreed with the purpose from Osage.
286,790, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So all of that is part of your motion to make sure we're. Are there any questions or other comments? So we do have the motion for the purchase, the group out of Jeff City, Missouri, the Osage type brand chassis, $286,790. And that is a 2020 chassis and also it is the low bid. And the one we've used previously, just so. Any other question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. I do not believe we have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move. I'll second it.
Got the motion and second to adjourn any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.